I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Before we start, I'd like to express my heartfelt sympathy to Kathy Hoytink. And that's from all of us on this earth. So, we agree for you. All right. Let's call a meeting of September 16th, 2014. Order. Hold on, order please.
Goddard?
Yes.
Love?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Madala?
Here.
Gambino?
Here.
Barry?
Here.
Approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the executive session for September 2nd and the regular city council meeting from September 2nd. Okay.
Call please.
Love?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Madala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Councilor. I'd like to make motion that we approve Councilor Pable as presented.
Second motion.
Motion made, seconded. All please.
Olson?
Yes.
Madala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Item five, the mayor's statement, civility and city council meetings. As we all know, or most others know, the last meeting was rather charged. And there were some people from the audience that were down announcing themselves, even were being rather uncivil at least, rather noisy display. And I just wanted everybody to know that in meetings to come that have been so often called, and the other part of the short civility announcement is that responsibility. And the council, our council is required to display responsibility through keeping mayor for very important subjects. That was one reason why we had such a newly meeting last session. It is councilors' responsibility as well as any commissioner, commissioner's responsibility. If they have any information that's anywhere close to what last meeting dealt with, they are responsible for alerting the mayor to these problems. Unfortunately, the mayor was not the last to know about any of this. As soon as I did give way into something, I started calling our different councilors. And one person was Barbara Love, left her a message. And the message said, Barbara, I don't know what to say. I don't even know how to begin, but we need to talk. And Barbara, I know why it took you several days to get back to me. And when you did, you told me that you were spending time with, I understand that, and you are be committed for that. However, you were remiss in your responsibility and as were other councilors and commission people. It's not right. We could have kept this to a civil and sad as it is tone. And so I want everybody to reflect on that. It's something that if instead of, well, I don't need to call the mayor and I don't care, you know, my name is A.J. Madala. And maybe you don't care for that person, but you will. And this, I said in our very first meeting of our first month of this tenure, you may not care for me as a person, but you will respect the office of mayor. That will happen. That's all I've got to say.
Well, I'd like an opportunity to respond, if you don't mind.
You may. And I got that comments.
Okay, fine. Are you hoping everyone will leave before I respond? I'd like to, I'd like the same audience to hear me that just heard you.
I'm sure there'll be, I'm sure there'll be here for you.
Will you all stay and listen to me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gambino?
Thank you.
Item six, reports of officers, boards, or standing committees. We don't have anything?
No, I don't. Sorry.
Anybody else? All right. Now on the public comments, I plead to keep in mind the civility portion of this meeting. So who'd like to be first?
What are you asking me, sorry, Mayor? I didn't hear you from the traffic. What are you asking?
For me.
What did you s-? Oh, okay. I couldn't hear you.
All right. One other statement, official plant lease agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we give a copy of the current draft lease agreement as received from our attorney to the potential renters for their review and comment.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Any other comment? All please.
Madala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Under new business, meeting schedule, transportation system plan, update, project. I don't really have any.
There's a meeting coming up on October 7th, a suggestive meeting.
I think that's what we're supposed to figure out. We want to add that meeting.
We want that meeting, yeah, that's correct. And that's the draft TSP update, and a bunch of our items. So this is our council meeting, seventh is a regular council meeting.
Is this going to be an afternoon or evening?
There's some arguments, you can help try to find them.
Is this an afternoon or evening meeting?
Pardon me?
Is that an afternoon or evening meeting?
You during the city council?
Yeah, October 7th, the mayor's council meeting.
But isn't the Transportation Committee also going to meet with the advisory group?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the memo says, if there are no objections to this date, it is anticipated that the TSP Community Advisory Committee will meet that afternoon, and the joint meeting will be scheduled before the regular council meeting at 5:00 or 5:30 p.m. And I would like to so move that. And I'll second that.
We can have that in the community hall or in here.
There's going to be a meeting before the September 7th.
The TSP, we normally have the TSP meetings in the community hall.
Right, because they put up their big boards.
Yeah, so I can make sure that that's scheduled in the community hall. I don't know if the community hall's scheduled still at this time.
And that's RIA and one of the?
Yeah, yeah, it's one of the.
Okay.
ODOT representatives.
So if we met there at 5:00, we could still have time to grab a sandwich and be here at 7:00.
Yes, okay.
Let's call it.
Can't at the community hall, but this one will be here.
Yeah, it'll be here, yeah, okay. So let's have it technically at the community hall.
Let's have this clerk at first. Our committee of the advisory group will be in the afternoon.
Yes.
Then you guys will be meeting with them at 5:00.
Right.
And then, okay, I'm good.
And I will make sure that the community halls go, if not, I'll put the word out.
Okay, fine. Item B. Okay.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm just trying to shoot to the. Four, I'm sorry.
And lights off here. Call please.
Gambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Madala?
Yes.
Okay, on item B, ready, the water hose, original service, this stuff, station wastewater source, they replaced it.
Right, I got five proposals from five different engineering groups. We have lots of engineers calling from throughout western Oregon, Portland area, Eugene area, that really got five proposals. They're, to explain the first one, Century West, they did a proposal, there's a change in Oregon state law for engineering RFPs, and it's called a QBS, which is quality base selection, which anything under $100,000 proposed engineering. So anything, say, if we think that it's going to be ballparked over that, then yes, definitely, you know, there would be a price included. But with state law, this started January 1st of 2014, that engineers would only put their qualifications out, like, these are the projects we've worked on in the past, here's our resume, here's similar photos of similar jobs that you're looking to get done. They put up these, really, it's quite elaborate proposals. And this is the one that Century West put up, and this actually has depot bay, Old Smalls Harbor, they put, you know, how well they, you know, can kind of coordinate with different ODOT divisions, and it's really quite elaborate. But they didn't include a price because they were going off the QBS. But the fact is that depot bay ordinances say $5,000 for an RFP, anything over $5,000 for an RFP. So our ordinance is different from the state. And we did call our attorney, and the attorney said that the city council should, in the near future, look into changing the ordinances, and he's going to work with me on that in a hurry, that maybe we need to change and look and reduce some of our ordinances like this one and maybe others to keep up with state law. And so, but that's something we may, we can and may not do. So anyway, that's the reason, just in short, that's the reason for Century West's no bid included. But because of our state, I mean, excuse me, because of the city's ordinances, everybody else abided by the regular RFP. So, to continue, I did read the proposals. I spent all weekend kind of milling through them, spent a lot of time reading them, just to see what the differences were, because some of the prices were higher. I recommend Civil West, they're from Newport. All the others are from Albany, Portland area, Clearwater's from, we know, we know Dave Kramp, he's from Logic. And anyway, Garrett is one of the gentlemen that represents Civil West, and he met with me quite a bit, and he on the side, we went through a lot of the issues that I was concerned with, and he put up a pretty good proposal at a very affordable price. And I think his pricing was more, where part of the surveys were done, it was quite costly for some of the engineers, and I think he may already have, because Civil West was a lot of engineering on the coast, that he may have a lot of the survey scope already, I think, known to him. So I, not having to tell me that, but that's my opinion. And also, you know, they're running Newport, and he feels comfortable about getting this job done for us, you know, pretty simply, but you never know, or very simple to him. But that's just, you know, that's my opinion. But I really did enjoy the time I spent with him, and was really intrigued by his knowledge. So that's why I'm going to go ahead and recommend.
That's the gentleman we talked to that was going to bypass and pull through the same.
They have different versions that they're going to do for the engineering. There's types of pipe bursting, where they can pull a pipe that's poly through an existing, sort of, I mean, hydraulics bursting right through the original line. But you have to temporarily bypass the line through ODOT's swarm line with a temporary pipe and be able to keep the flow going while you're taking the old system down and busting a new line through it. There's also directional boring, which they would leave the old line intact and actually just bore a new, a boring machine through to the manhole, and then they pull the new pipe through from there. So there's different versions on how to do this. We're definitely not going to let a saw cut Highway 101. You can off the fog line, so there's maybe some versions where we can direction door across the highway, and then saw cut and open ditch all the way to the Ringo restaurant from 76 Station, inside, you know, towards the east side of Fog Line. So there's all these different versions, but that's what the engineers for. And all those proposals are in these, you know, the ideas. There's no pricing, but there's ideas of how to do this.
But by that innovation, they could save us a lot of money.
Yeah, and they're going to find the best feasible way for us. And it's also like the, maybe a rock, the salt that may crop up on us, and some of that ODOT research may help us determine that, is finding out what they have on their books and their records. So took all that into consideration. Do a lot of research, but I came up with, I think it's feasible for the city, it's the lowest price, but I don't think it's low because it's just a cheap company. I think, I think it's low because I think you get a lot of homework and do it for a good price for us.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. May I make a motion that we approve the RFP bid from Civil West Engineering for $16,897? Second. Motion is made and seconded. Come forward now. Thoughts on that? Call please.
Barry?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Madala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm going to get on this ASAP, because we've got other important projects coming, and I'd really like to get this one going, because this keeps me up at night. Thank you for letting me forward with that.
Our next item is an interesting proposal brought up by the community center.
If I may, this was an idea brought to me by Pat Dunlop, who, you know, it was a good idea, so I want to suggest about having our community hall open to the community Monday through Wednesday, so our citizens can have a place to organize. I don't know what kind of clubs they'll have, bridge clubs, or so and circles, or whatever, but just, you know, use the community hall for the community, and it would be open, and I would be willing to give my time to unlock it and then clean it up afterwards, Monday through Wednesday. Of course, if there's something, like somebody rents it or a meeting, you know, we would, you know, we'd give it to them, but if it's not being used, it might as well be used by the community. It wouldn't cost that much, and most cities have like things, winters coming, they'd be like indoor parks. I have people from Bob's Books, I might do a take a book, give a book situation, and it would just be an indoor park for our citizens to gather and, you know, do something, and I just think it would be good for the community.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that is such an absolutely wonderful idea, that I proposed it at city council two years ago, and it was proposed about five years before that. And each time it was proposed, and I'm not suggesting that maybe something couldn't be worked out now, but each time it was proposed in the past, after the lawyers and the, and the insurance company got finished with us, there was no way we could do it because of the liability insurance. We would have had to ask people to pay liability insurance just to come in even for meetings. I wanted a place for seniors to be able to exercise three mornings a week. Seems pretty reasonable, right? You know, wouldn't need any big equipment, just some chairs and maybe some two and five pound weights. And we were told that the liability to the city would be huge. Now, if there's a way around that now that didn't exist then, I love the idea, but someone's going to have to go out and do a lot of research.
Well, I guess I'll start doing some research, especially.
Okay, good.
Especially.
Good, I mean, maybe something has changed, or maybe, I, we even asked, you know, can people, can people sign waivers? Guess what? They don't need anything. No waiver ever stopped anybody from suing if they rent themselves, especially on publicly owned property.
So, I mean, well, I'll ask the attorney then about, like, when people rent the hall and all that stuff, what's protected us then, just we're not being protected, just our insurance.
Yeah, the insurance protects us up to a certain point, right. But they were really uptight about it.
Yeah, but for instance, Mary Sue Beth Dogger has a wedding, right? She inherits it, and she's covered by our insurance to use it, correct?
Her insurance, yes.
Her insurance?
Yeah, I don't know.
No, I, I guess where I'm going.
Yeah, I don't know.
I guess where I'm going here is that, you're right, we have to research it.
We have to research.
At the end of the day, it seems like if there was a bridge club or an exercise club on a regular basis, I can't see what the difference is between that and, say, a wedding or.
Yeah, I don't know. All I know is we got shot down. But maybe there's a way to figure that out now, it didn't exist before. So I would encourage you to really research it.
If someone would like to make that motion and include running it by our attorney again, then that's, that's good.
So moved.
So, okay. Sorry.
No, it's a matter of frustration to me, because we couldn't get a, I think a little thing to think of us that we.
I will, I will get on.
You know, Barbara says she's smart, tried to push this thing through. I tried pushing this thing through with the old economic development, and with the new. There's, I have different ideas that come by, like, Melissa Orkin was talking about her mother while she was still alive, wouldn't fly anywhere at Saint Crochet. You get a bunch of people like that, but some more practical use of that, but high school kids need credits for community stuff. Can you imagine how nice it would be if you knew on Monday somebody would be there that could help you, if somebody's would be there to tell you how to use your new cell phone? Or some kid was there to tell you how to use that stupid iPad that somebody gave you for a gift? Or my new flickety black computer that I'm trying to put my foot through? I mean, you get a high school kid, and they could do that, they'd get some credit for the hours they sat there, and it would be nice not to have to pay tech costs for that when you walk into Staples.
Pat, we're talking to Converly, we all agree with you.
Yeah.
We just have to figure out a way to.
Get the C I F.
Would like to come forward, please.
I learned something today that might be helpful. I was with the Lions Club group locally.
You want to say your name?
Steve Sparks, I'm sorry.
And your address?
It's 228 Southwest Nesting Lake, People Bay. The Lions Club group brought up an idea today that really got my attention, and that is, if we allow them to sponsor our community hall, they can provide the insurance for that. That's a new thing from the Lions Club International Organization, that they do that in communities. Their whole focus is being directed more at community needs and try to, in the context of community building, was the nature of my meeting with them today, and now we could work together at Neighbors for Kids, but since Brett offered this wonderful proposal that's been out there for a long time, and insurance and attorneys and all the rest of it is a challenge, my guess is that there's a solution there.
So you two should get together and do the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Pat, you're part of the Lions Club, aren't you?
Yes, just on the form of a meeting. Anyhow, he brought up a good point that I forgot about. When I was teaching, I used to take kids on crazy field trips, and the way we got around it is my entire class was a 4H, and by paying $1 per kid per year, we had insurance over 4H activities that covered our families no matter where we went. So there are ways around it.
We've got, we've got an idea, we're going to get the ball. And I'm, I'm.
All right, let's go. Three moves, I'll give that one to the attorney to the panel. What ways?
Um, before, I, we don't need to set a motion for me to speak with Mr. Sparks and the Lions Club without him in coming back and saying, hey.
I'll just get you in touch with the.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks.
Yes.
Would you like to take that motion up later now? If they're going to get.
Well, no, I, well, yeah, but he still is going to have to talk to our lawyer and our insurance company at some point, so, no, I want to keep the motion on the table.
That's my call, please.
Goddard?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Madala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
On to item D, city council vacancy position three. We need to direct staff to advertise for that position. And that should be done as soon as possible.
If I remember correctly, the memo that Curry gave us asked for us to give her specific dates that we wanted the ads to run, and when we wanted, what the deadline was for people submitting, so that we could have it on the agenda the next council meeting.
Yeah, I think Curry mentioned to me that she'd be back tomorrow when leave, and then I'll take it up with her, so he's out there as possible, maybe.
We're going to run the ad once, twice?
We'll discuss that with Curry tomorrow with.
Well, you don't need direction from the council?
Isn't there a protocol for that?
No, that's why she asked in the memo for the instruction from the council.
All right, have you had, do you have a suggestion?
My suggestion, here we go. I move that we authorize the mayor to work with Curry to set up the advertising and follow-up on the council vacancy, so that the ad runs at least twice in the media and things get properly posted for at least one week, and then at the closest council meeting after that, we take the matter up.
Have a second on that? Made and seconded? Call please.
Love?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Madala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Item 10, what we have for correspondence? No? Are you, you have anything?
Yeah, I have a invitation to have dinner with the executive director of Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments. I'd like to meet for lunch with myself and the mayor on October 15th for lunch. We can give them, if you don't mind, that you and I can do that.
With Fred, I'll put some.
Yes, absolutely.
That's fine, yeah.
And make a.
And what time, at noon?
Yeah, at lunch at noon time.
This is for?
It's just a meeting with the Oregon Cascade Council of Governments, and I guess Fred's just going to do some, give us information on. give us information on, uh, I guess public record law disclosures and it doesn't really say, it's, uh, he wants, he's a senior resource manager and, um, he's coming along because he wants to meet the mayor. He's new at the job, so he must've just kind of introduced himself.
Yeah, I understand.
Say what he represents.
I understand he's gonna put the, I will meet, it will be eighteen as well, come on, we'll be at all things, all right?
And then.
That's good, that's fine.
Okay, that's your staff. And then, uh, the Craig Taunton, I'm also just gonna let you know that the, uh, the dock storage settlement, lease agreement with, uh, the Tauntons has been complete to my satisfaction. It's, he's met all the criteria needed for removal of the docks and everything down there, so it's all cleaned up and, and left and get the, the dredge folks that kind of source and stuff there from the site, but, uh, I have photos of it and it's, they've met the criteria they're supposed to for removal. So, that's all done and I just wanted to let you know that that's complete. It was, uh, it was on a memo from Curry, so I thought I'd just bring that up.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it.
Now?
Correspondence, yes.
Okay, that concludes city staff report.
Oh, no, I, I have staff report. I thought you were doing correspondence.
Oh, he's moving on his staff.
Okay.
I'm gonna do that, do that to Curry every time, so.
Um, we received a copy where I noticed on our YouTube channel in regards to the music on a promotional video. There's been some emails back and forth with mayor and, uh, couple of counselors and, um, Mr. Shippey did provide us with a copy of his receipt for the music when he purchased it and it showed us we were okay to use it. However, YouTube rejected the dispute I filed and gave us no recourse for appeal. So Curry and I discussed the matter this morning and, uh, based on Mr. Shippey's latest email, we decided to, um, just put the video up on, we're posting it on our, through our website and we took it off of YouTube, so there's no danger of our account being tarnished by, you know, a copyright strike because Mr. Shippey said it's very difficult to deal with YouTube on these issues and we just, we want to spend more time on it. So I don't anticipate any issues with that, like that problem we had back in June with the denial of service. I think it'll be fine, so.
We'll be right here.
And we're gonna give a copy of, uh, of the video to the chamber and they're gonna put it on their website also.
And distribute it as the chamber sees best.
Yeah. I have another question for you. Mr. Shippey, through his emails, has suggested that we use his YouTube account to put this video out there. What is the problem with that?
There is no problem with that. There's not really any advantage to it either, except to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be there for somebody plugging in people pay or they come up on YouTube then?
Well, yeah.
I mean, I don't know a whole lot about YouTube, so I'm just, every, every email I've read had that as an option on there.
Yeah. Whether or not people go to YouTube and plug in people pay, they're going to find that. If they go to our website, to the city's website, it's there too. So they're going to find it either way. Um, whether we point to it from our website or where we host it ourselves is really the only difference, so. You know, if that's what the council wants to do, that's what we will do.
I don't spend a lot of time on YouTube, so I really, I don't know.
It really doesn't make a difference. If people are interested in people pay, they're gonna type people pay and it's gonna get, trust me, there's not a lot of pages of people pay, it's gonna be coming up in the first page.
So it's there anyway?
So it's there anyways.
Okay.
Durinda, you mentioned, um, that, well, actually Barbara, you mentioned that there's gonna be a copy.
Oh, uh, well, it'd be on the city webpage, it'd be on the, uh, Chamber of Commerce webpage. And then Durinda, you said, and you'll have copies and distribute them as the chamber seats get.
Right.
What do you have there? I don't understand.
Well, if we paid for this video and we need to get it out there, it needs to be seen by as many people as possible. Um, I think, I think that chamber members want a copy of it to loop in their, in their businesses to play with, you know, so people can watch it. It'd be a great thing. Um, I know there's possibility of ordering copies of it or selling it. It just needs somebody to do something, wouldn't it? Get it out there so people can see it.
Okay, is that it all now?
Well, now, I have Pat Mike Sappaport. P. Mike Sappaport. Now, all right. Okay, um, I just wanna let you, the council know today, um, um, Josh and I, Josh is the fire chief, um, and myself are involved in a simulated tsunami exercise put on by Lincoln County Emergency Task, but Jimmy Damaris, um, had a simulated tsunami that came from Japan and we, it was about, it was a practice run through Everbridge and we had to, um, use the telephones and there was also emails to verify it. We got the message and it was a pretty good rundown. It was, uh, over the phone, but you had to kind of dictate the, the problems that you were having and we, and Josh and I came up with that we had lost both dock one and two and that we were assisting with our crew and his, his first responders. And just kind of a basic rundown of, of what may occur, say, if we had another tsunami from Japan at a high tide or something like that. And it was kind of minor, there were some, there were some problematic areas, but as we moved north of the county on down south, it was really interesting to listen to and I just wanted to know that, that we kind of set the tone for the events happening and Josh did a really good job and, and I kind of followed suit with what he said because I didn't really know how to go about it, but it went really well and just let you know that that, we're, we're looking better than we were. We're kind of on the back burner for a while, while we're kind of leading the, the county and some of our stuff, so, emergency trailer and things like that, so. Um, next item I have is, uh, the siren, the tsunami sirens. The maintenance crew was here to do, uh, just regular maintenance, it's part of the warranty. Um, we found problems with the, the, the siren furthest north, um, so it's got parts coming. Um, all in all, they, they, everything tested out great. They do test every day silently, but, uh, you know, we're, we're still looking in, working, uh, and, uh, Curry and I are still trying to hit the card through some of the American signal and getting some of the final, final stuff done. But, uh, it looks like they're holding up pretty good and, and so far, so good and we, but we do need to come up with the, the right wording and, you know, with, with deciding what the, the phrases are and we have to have another meeting with, uh, the siren board.
Right, the siren board recognizes that it has that one final task.
Right.
And Roy and I have actually talked about setting up a meeting because we need to do that while I'm still in office.
And they, they said that they would, uh, the, uh, the company's gonna help us with, with this. So, anyway, that, so that occurred last week, I just wanted the council to know.
Is this part that's needed, is that under the warranty?
Yes, absolutely, that's, yeah. Um, the, the, the crew coming down twice a year, they do, um, just simulated, uh, signal testing, check the, the, this happened to be some interface board that was out there, you know, they got a car coming, they're gonna be here, I think, next Monday to get in.
Is that a chance why, I think it was for three or four days, uh, you heard the.
Turfing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was part of the test. And I, you know, I don't know if we should notify it now, but.
We can see for sure.
So, um, next, the, uh, the, the bus bar clean tube, um, was removed today by the enterprise construction. It was, went really fast, really, it came down, it was really rotten, it could've came down at any time. So, anyway, that's cleaned up and removed and, uh, it came, the box is still, I, I think the box is gone now, but, uh, everything fit in a, you know, small dumpster. Wasn't real small, but it was a forty dollar, so that's complete. Just wanted to let you know, moving forward with that, we're gonna, uh, Larry's working with me, Larry Lewis, uh, to have a new design to store emergency trailer back there and redo that into the bus bar, so it's up to code. Because what was there was, so, so that'll be nice. Um, the, uh, we all know that the, uh, the truck in the bang, um, incident we all saw on the cover of the paper, but I just wanted the council to know that the, the crew acted really well with all the other first responders and there was absolutely no spill in that bag. There was no residual or anything floating, the containment bins or what little bit of maybe paint kind of came out as we were pulling it up the ramp, so it's amazing that we didn't get any spill out of that and I think it was due to the man, the, the response and, and the quick response for everything from the diver to the, to the tow weight to everything, the fire department, Coast Guard, all. I just really give everybody kudos for their efforts in that.
City crews personally.
Yeah.
Yeah, city crew did really good. I gave them really good kudos. I got donuts, so. So that's about it. The, we did, we did have one of the projects at the water plant and Paul wanted to let everybody know that there was no impact that there's a brand new five foot round, big culvert that went in at the water plant, that there was no impact to the quality of the water when that was going in. Didn't, didn't cause any disturbance to our drinking water, so that was really a big, this culvert's in there to, to help mitigate, um, beaver problems that we have up there and, uh, it's a larger pipe, it's smoothened, it's a plastic, smooth wall, five foot around, it's about thirty feet long. And I know beavers are good engineers, but I don't think they're gonna clog this one, so that's complete. Couldn't they manage?
Yeah, I was gonna go back on that.
So, anyway, that's it for my staff report.
All right. And the council comments or?
I have something to say. It will be very brief and it is addressed to you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and only to you at this point. And that is, for two years, I have worked very hard to do my job as a counselor, to support the mayor, to support other counselors, whether I agreed with them or not. I have never engaged in any personal attacks. I have never tried to obfuscate an issue by looking for another issue to focus on. Um, I could've done all of those things often, but I chose not to then and I choose not to now, except to say, if it weren't so sad, what you did earlier would be really funny. I called you within twenty seconds of getting your message. Within twenty seconds of getting your message because my phone was turned off, because I was helping a friend who happened to be married to a city counselor to whom I felt very close and I felt a huge sense of loss myself. Don't try to attack me when your issues are really elsewhere and you're just not dealing with them. And now I will pull the other thing that I've heard you do very often, which is, okay, I've said my piece, that's enough about that.
Well, respectfully, counselor left. It was days, not seconds. And when you called me back and told me, I'm sorry I didn't get back to you sooner, but I was spending time with Kathy Hoyt. And I told you, I understand that, that's all right. But it was not just seconds, it was days.
No, no, I said, I called you within thirty seconds of getting your message. I didn't touch my cellphone for two days.
For three days.
Correct.
I see. And I guess there's, uh, nothing to be done about that now.
That's correct.
Well, thank you for spending your time with, uh.
I think that was a little bit more important.
Yes, it was.
I could hear that.
She said she thought that was important.
Boy, I'm sure, yes, very important. I had no idea that, uh, you hadn't received your mail or your voicemail, so that's just one of those things and I guess it just happened. But you understand.
Thank you for what I assumed was not to be in a.
Do you understand why I was saying what I was saying?
No, I actually don't.
Well.
But that's okay.
Well, I understand what you were saying, but you can't reciprocate, well, that's why I called. And, yes, well.
I, I was surprised and I'm kind of curious as to how many council people you called when you needed to talk to the entire council.
Well.
Because I didn't know how many.
Actually, I, I came down to visit with you and I, uh.
I just, I remember I walked in the office, you didn't say a word to me.
I did.
No, you didn't.
I did, that was like I wasn't even there.
You didn't say a word to me, you were talking to my employee and very shortly after I walked in the office, you left. You had plenty of opportunity to say something, you had plenty of opportunity to call me. I'm just feeling, wondering if you were calling council people, how many did you call?
Durinda, I came down and made eye contact with you and I wanted to talk with you, but it, it just didn't happen. It was like I wasn't even there.
I stood right there in front of you, AJ, waiting for you to say something to me. I said hello to you. You chose to continue talking to my employee.
Okay, that's, that's.
I, I, I'm just wondering how many, how many council people you called and why this would be a major subject here. We're spurring the entire subject is what we're doing.
Okay, any other council comments, please? Just in closing, that's your version. That, uh, not mine. I told you what my version was.
My, my version of leaving in my office?
Yes.
And leaving a brush for when I walked in? I'm sorry, my phone rings, you may have my number. I, I am just, just out of curiosity.
Just as a matter of question, wouldn't you be, I know I would be, more flattered if it was a one-on-one, person-to-person conversation than over the telephone?
More flattered to?
Especially, especially something that is negative.
I get, you called hard, I assume.
Yeah, I did, I was, I was so taken aback.
I assume you called Brent?
No, I didn't.
Okay, then you didn't call all the councils. That's what I was asking.
The what?
You said you'd been contacting councils, it was your duty to contact the city councils. I was just wondering how many of the city councils.
Well, I didn't, I didn't get anything from anybody, so, and then by then it was all I had for her, so that's, that's the way I left it. Okay, well, that's enough of that business. If anybody has anything else, say it now, please. It's eight forty-nine in Little Germany.